Ladies and gentlemen, if you'll rise and join me in a question reply. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I welcome you all to the December voting meeting of the Exeter Township School District Board of Directors. I would like to announce that prior to the meeting, we did have an executive session where we discussed personnel. And we will have another executive session afterwards to discuss facilities. As I said, this is a voting meeting. We had an additional meeting at the beginning of the month where it determines a workshop where most of the discussion takes place. I invite any of you who are interested in the room, any of you to come into those workshop meetings. Are there any comments from the public to the board?
No one signed.
No one signed up? Well, you get an opportunity even if you don't sign. Hearing no comments, we have two sets of minutes for the November meetings. I entertain the proposal.
Second.
Of motion on the second. Any discussion or corrections on those minutes? Hearing none. All in favor of accepting minutes, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? The motion does carry. Treacher's report?
I move the treasurer's report as it attaches.
Second.
Motion in the second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of approving the treasurer's report as presented, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? The motion carries. Business functions. Mr. Stone.
I move that the board of school directors award contracts for the purchase of fuel, natural gas, gasoline, heating oil, and diesel through Burke County Joint Purchasing for the period of July 1, 2014 through June 30 of 2015. Natural gas was awarded to UGI for DS accounts and heating and Hess for MT accounts other use. Gasoline and heating oil were awarded to Tally Petroleum Enterprises, Inc. Diesel tank wagon was awarded to County Petroleum, and diesel transport was awarded to Petroleum Traders Corporation. That's an attachment B-A.
Second.
Motion in the second. Discussion. All in favor of approving the commodity bids, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? The motion carries.
Based on bids open on December 3, 2013, I move that the board of school directors award the bids as recommended to the lowest bidding, lowest bidder meeting all specifications, two seventy passenger bus and one twenty-four passenger, three wheelchair bus Aurora bus sales at a bid total of $262,398 less trade-in of $22,500 for a total net bid of $239,878. Next, an attachment five D.
Second.
Motion in the second. Discussion.
How many buses do you trade in on?
How many are we trading in? There's three trades.
Okay. And are there ages?
The ages up there? Between ten and twelve years old.
What did we originally budget for the three? Two fifty? Do you recall?
This will be fourteen, fifteen.
Improved discussion?
Well, I don't know if it's possible. I'd like to make a motion to withhold on the vote until we have the next meeting with support staff again.
Second on the motion table. We don't have a second on the table. We now have a second on the table in the motion. All in favor of any discussion on table in the motion.
I don't feel it's appropriate to table this time because this is an item that is budgeted to be purchased this year. Our machinery is wearing out. It's not going to service this next year. Honest to the purpose of holding up this particular vote on this item.
Did you want to share your rationale?
Well, I just, again, I know that we're, we had a discussion previous to this meeting. I just realized that support staff is the one that's responsible for sort of running these buses and we're in negotiation with them on this contract and I would just rather put people before the equipment. And I know that we had a good discussion prior to this meeting. I'd like to see what happens in January. That's my opinion.
Any further comments?
And what's the, any, any?
Well, I have to, as far as, we might be okay for January, but we won't use delay at the risk of not getting the buses in time and ready for the opening of the school. Because delivery typically is in early July. And historically, I think last year we may have waited or prior year until January. I think we'd be okay, but beyond that, it's a risk.
How long the price is good?
Yeah. That would, through January, we'll still be on it.
I think that the way that we've managed the rotation of these buses has moved up really effectively for us, so I would not like to support the position at this time. I understand what you're saying. We've had a lot of, we've been a lot of experience in this thing, not really moving these decisions. And it has been, it's cost effective, and this would no longer be a process. So I don't know that it would change much of the position that you're considering.
Further discussion on tabling this issue. We're now voting in order to table consideration plus purchase. All in favor of tabling? The motion, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The motion to table the issue has been defeated. We are now back on the original motion concerning purchase of the buses. Is there any further comment? Hearing none. All in favor of the bus purchase as presented, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed?
No.
The motion does carry.
I move that the board of school directors approve budget transfers for the month of November 2013 in the amount of $1,504 as an attachment five C.
Second.
Motion in the second. Discussion. All in favor of the budget transfers as indicated, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? The motion carries.
I move that the board of school directors approve the tax increment financing payment to the Burke County Industrial Development Authority in the amount of $272,947.25 for 2013. 2012 payment was $286,758. The school district's payment is in addition to amounts paid by the township and the county, which will allow the authority to pay debt service on the notes of the tax increment financing project. The total of school property taxes collected on the Exeter Commons tax increment was $744,496.46 for 2013, up from $727,769. The school district will retain 63.3% or $471,549.21, an amount of 60.6% or $441,000 of the increment as an attachment five D.
Got a second?
Second.
Motion in the second. For everyone's information, this is the road project down by the, down by where Figg was speaking, down by the Commons.
Exeter Commons.
Exeter Commons.
Okay.
Any discussion?
The payment's contractual, right?
The payment is contractual, but we have to have agreement to do it.
No.
All in favor of authorizing payment, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? The motion carries.
I move that the board of school directors accept the donation in the amount of $5,485 from the Exeter Music Association so that the district can purchase a John Deere Gator that can be used by the Exeter County School District marching band at games and parades.
What John Deere?
Wait, I have a second.
Second.
What is a John Deere?
It's a utility vehicle. It looks like a little six, it has six tires, two in the back and two in the front. It hauls around quick. It's probably replacing whatever we were using before.
Actually, it looks like a cop.
Any further discussion on accepting the donation for the Gator?
It's for each other.
Hearing none.
Exactly. How about a big thank you?
Yes.
Hearing none. All in favor of accepting the donation, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? The motion carries. And thank you to the music association. Thank you. Personnel, Dr. Bender.
I move the board of school directors accept the following resignations. List under Part A, number one, administrative staff; number two, certificate staff; and on the addendum, number three, support staff.
Motion in the second. Designations. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor of approving these resignations, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? The motion carries.
I move the board of school directors approve or ratify the following appointments. List under Part B, number one, certificate staff; number two, well, yeah. And there's one item on the agenda, addendum, under certificate staff appointments.
Dr. Bender, could you quickly separate the two?
Do I have a second?
I'm only doing number one, the substitute teachers is number two.
Oh.
Number second.
Second.
Motion in the second. Discussion on appointments.
Yes. We have somebody with an out-of-state certification. Do they, from Texas? Nothing against Texas, but do they have a Pennsylvania certification?
Yes, she does.
Amy?
Yes, she does, yeah.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the appointments, B1, and the amendment, addendum, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? The motion carries.
I move the board of school directors approve the list of following substitute teachers. List under number two, A, certified teachers.
Second.
Motion in the second. Discussion. All in favor of appointing the certified substitute teachers, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? The motion carries.
I move the board of school directors approve the list of guest teachers. List under Part two, B.
Second. Motion in the second. Discussion.
I would be loaded against these false guest teachers, three or certified, and I am against.
Any further discussion? All in favor of approving the emergency certified guest teachers, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
I move the board of school directors approve the filing staff, support staff appointment of Melissa D. Newton.
Dr. Bender, I noticed that that inadvertently is her original hiring that was voted on last month. Melissa is moving to a new position, so that is incorrectly stated there, if you would want me to correct that now.
Yeah, we did.
Okay. Melissa Newton is a part-time, is going to a part-time guidance secretary position at the senior high school, replacing Patty Sierewski at a rate of $10 per hour effective December 11, 2013. So Melissa's moving from one two-hour position to a four-hour position.
Thank you. So I'll make the motion as described.
What happens to Diane's position then?
No, Diane's already at the position.
I have a second on the motion.
But I mean, who's replacing her in the cafeteria at Lorraine? Did we already act on that?
She's doing, she's doing two hours and two hours right now. We haven't, we haven't replaced her yet, but we moved her to the senior high school on the 11th.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
I'm going to move to amend your motion to.
No, I, we're voting on Melissa Newton assuming a position, a part-time position in the guidance office at the high school, replacing Patty Sierewski effective November.
December 11.
December 11. All in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? The motion carries.
I move the board of school directors approve or ratify the following request of leave of absence. List under Part C, number one, certificate staff A and D.
Second.
Motion in the second. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor of approving the leaves of absence, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? The motion carries.
I move the board of school directors approve the following staff conferences. List under Part D, number one through 11 on the main agenda, and number 12 on the addendum.
I entertain a second. Motion in the second. Discussion.
Could someone please define what flight team training is for us? So I understand what 31 over dollars?
Yes, Mr. Artie. I know you're, I know you'd like to explain what flight team training is.
Flight team training is, if there's a crisis in any of the county schools, some of the school districts in our county unfortunately don't have people that are certified in this type of training. So it takes three full days of professional training to get that license to go out to other schools and give support and help to those people. And I think our district started this about 10, nine or 10 years ago, and we've been going out to various schools for the last nine or 10 years.
Has it always been called flight team training?
Yes.
This isn't the same as the one that was, an incident, and they go to support the kids that are?
This is?
Yes, it is.
This is the team of school administrators and teachers goes out, who offer moral support, guidance, and other support in the event of, it's primarily been deaths at other, of students at other school districts.
It could be any sort of.
It could be any sort of crisis.
And we've had flight team trained people from other districts come to help us in the past when we've had that need as well.
So are these new trainees or are these already, it's good, like, update?
They're new. They've never gone before. And we need to increase our number because some of them retired who had been trained in the past or left to go work somewhere else, and so we don't have as many as we would like to have.
So how many that will we have as a total?
John, do you know how many?
We presently have 10, as Dr. Martin just alluded to. There's a couple people on the team that I think are going to be retiring soon. And our goal is to try and get at least one, if not two, in every one of our six buildings. The other point to think that should be made here is the training for this does not occur every year. And so people are trying to hop on it when it is offered and it is local.
And I was just, you know, interested.
So do they get deployed any weekends, nights, whenever, or is there, is it mostly during school hours?
Well, it's mostly during school hours, but it could be any time, like, depending on the circumstances. And a lot of times, when we've had a need, I know we've met with flight team members on a Sunday morning, a Saturday night, you know, because obviously tragedies can happen at any time. So, but, but to provide service, they typically will provide service in the school during school hours to both teachers and students as needed.
I think it's open. I think it's a wonderful job for this district to assist other districts. I can tell you there's been a lot of deaths at Red High School in my tenure there. It's very important for some kids, depending on who the student, you know, would admit them in or whatever. We had one year where there were five kids murdered between August and December. Can you imagine, you know, what was needed? If the county wasn't there to pull together. And this is just us doing our part, trying to get everybody where we have them.
Any further side, why, I understand all we're voting on that.
I'm not sure why they call it flight team, but they always have.
Any further discussion? All in favor of approving the staff conferences as listed, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? The motion carries.
That completes personnel.
Thank you, Dr. Bender. Student function, discussion.
Oh, we have a long list of students within the 60 mile radius. Busy time. I believe I recommend, I believe that the board of directors approve an Act 48 program placement agreement between the Exeter Township School District and River Rock, a platter meeting for alternative education services, 2013, 14, school year at a tuition cost of $30 a day per student and $50 per day per student for transportation services.
Second. The motion is second. Discussion.
I have a question. Just relating to the charge of $30 a day per student.
For transportation?
For transportation. Is that cheaper, I mean, since we're busing students all over, is that cheaper than we could do it more?
Dr. Miller, correct me if I'm wrong, we were not able to arrange transportation with our own department for these students. No, sorry, we had to, we just didn't have the availability.
Okay. The second part of my question would be, I mean, it's possible we might have three or four students going there, which would mean we pay 120, for four students, we'd be paying $120 a day for the same kind of route coming back and forth.
Yeah, that's true.
So it seems that we should have some prorated schedule.
Negotiate a.
We could.
Try to negotiate.
I mean, I don't want to delay the services to the, for the children who need it immediately.
Yeah.
Do you, where is, where are they going to? Are they going to one specific location? Where?
Is it in, is it in.
Is it lower, higher, first school?
Or the Wilson schools?
Somebody else's school. Is this, are they new services for us?
Yes.
Replacing?
Not necessarily replacing anyone. We're using them as an AEDY, Alternative Education for Disruptive Youth in Burke County facility, in addition to Manitow. Manitow already has 15 children, which is pretty much your capacity for them, and we need to move in another site, and this one is located close, plus it has a very good reputation. And I know Dr. Miller and Mrs. Far and I have visited there and have been very pleased with the services that were offered to our students. And they are close, so oftentimes we have to take the children quite a distance in order to find the correct placement for them.
I have a few questions. And what do we pay for a Manitow student, for, I mean, an Exeter student going to Manitow?
A prepaid slot, $15,000. Anyone else that attends, it's a rate per day.
And what's happening?
Off the top of my head, it's probably around $117, $120 per day for special education. I don't, some they'll add on if the school needs additional or intensive services, but that's.
It's, it's pretty much in the same ballpark as this.
Well, one, one, $15,000 isn't in the ballpark of $28,000.
That's prepaid whether you use it or not.
Pardon?
The prepaid, we prepaid two slots for Manitow.
Right. And how many students do we have going there?
Four or five at present time.
So we could prepay four slots?
Sometimes you win, sometimes you lose.
We don't know what the need's going to be. Sometimes we have slots sitting there that we've paid for and we're not using them, and we don't want to over commit ourselves to more slots than what we think we might need. But we don't always know our needs in advance because of transfers and so forth.
I mean, if the director knows that that student will be there the next year, we'll prepaid. But the others, there's so many on the list.
Well, how many students, can you have any students going up to this school now?
Yes.
Without either of the board approval?
Yes.
How did that happen?
Dr. Miller, we needed, we needed a placement for a student, and we didn't have that placement. We didn't have the contract yet.
All right, well, it says that the school will now provide food services. Well, how do each child get food services? Does, do our, does our district have to provide?
For Manitow?
No, for.
Oh, for, for Rock.
No, we don't.
We don't provide.
I don't know if they bring their own food or how that works.
So at the cost, it's like, oh, 28,000, and is that both regular and specialized, or is it more of a specialized?
That's for this particular, that's for, that's for specialized.
So what would it be for regular?
I don't know.
So we're approving something we don't even know what we want to do?
We're not, we're not placing regular education students there, we're placing special education students there.
Where did we place our special education students before? Didn't we come to the DCIU?
At times, we have used the DCIU in the past.
How much do they charge?
I don't know, Pat. It's, it's all in the same ballpark. They're all pretty competitive with each other.
Well, this is a for-profit school, and I'm against for-profits, I'm even against nonprofits. I think, I think we do a great job. It said that they only give math and language arts. That's, that's the only thing that they provide. They don't, so if you have a high school student going there, how are they going to meet any graduation requirements? We have, we have science that they have to do, we have some, like, political science for four years, plus art and music. How would they ever get a degree from Exeter? Or it says we have to provide them services, but they don't provide. It says right here that they, that they only do language arts and math.
Dr. Miller, would you want to answer any programming questions?
As far as being an AEDY, I don't have the contract in front of me, but.
I have it, if you'll look at it.
Approved educational placement for alternative children. They are first approved by the state. We're not allowed to put any children in that school until they're approved by the state, and they have to have, for high school students, the entire course requirements to be able to, math, science, social studies, English, they need to have all of that in order to be an approved AEDY for those students there.
That's not what it says here in this contract. And we're agreeing to this contract. It says, it says math and language arts, that's all it says. And that we, as this district, then had to provide the rest, that they can't provide. That's what it says right here.
Can I address that question? The River Rock, an AEDY school, has the students are required to take the PS, the PFT, that's nothing, Keystone, just if they are here. So if our students are in a grade level, that Keystone does minister, and they're at River Rock. at River Rock, they're, they are receiving academic instruction on all those content areas, and they are tested in the Keystone sessions for the PSA. So they do have all of the core content. They're required by the state. When I completed the application piece for the state to be approved for us to use River Rock as an AEDY school, I had to submit what River Rock gave me as their core content requirements. And yes, they teach reading, yes, they teach math, but they also teach English, they also teach writing and social studies and science. They teach the core content area in addition to any counseling or any social stuff that the students need for the region to place that in River Rock. So the state requires that the AEDY need the core content area. They have to do that by state law.
Well, that's not what it says in this contract.
Would you reference where you're talking about in the contract, please?
Academic standards and assessments.
What the page, all right?
Page, page number nine.
Yeah.
Pat, I, I guess I have a different interpretation of that paragraph. Like, my interpretation is that the program includes reading, writing, speaking, and listening and math, not that it excludes the other subjects that we've just heard about.
It says, one, it complies in full for the academic standards and assessments under chapter four of the state regulations, academic standards for reading, writing, spelling, and math.
And the.
And the.
And what?
He says and.
Says that. Says it complies with chapter four.
Is chapter four how all is it?
We would need to review chapter four to know what all that is.
Yes, chapter four has all of the academic standards in it and all subjects.
Is there any further discussion? I will be abstaining as I have family working at River Rock. All in favor of approving the contract, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
I move that the Board of Directors approve and accept the agreement on admission of disciplinary violation, labor, formal and due process areas, and superintendent disposition is set forth in the adjudication for student one four one three zero one.
Second. Motion is second. Discussion.
Is there a, a cost related to this?
So you're in, okay. Is there a cost?
Well, there's a, there's a placement cost.
Okay.
Yeah, just, yeah.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Karen. Mr. Feesinger, Curriculum Programs Committee?
The Curriculum Committee, next meeting will be on January seventh of two thousand and four. Yeah, I know.
Russ, can I just mention that in the folders, there are the changes, proposed changes to the Sore Eagle? Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know, I didn't know if you realized that.
Yeah, you did. Thanks.
For the upcoming Sore Eagle courses for the high school for the two thousand fourteen, fifteen school year. And they will be discussed at the Curriculum Committee meeting that Russ just referred to. And then they will be on the agenda in January for discussion, discussion and then approval.
At our, at our last meeting on the night, we did, we, we had Mr. Kane make a report on the proposed changes to the Sore Eagle, and we also reviewed the math pilot that's going on. I wanted to say one more thing. Just, just amazing.
Are there any technologies that should be covered? Thank you, Mr. Feesinger.
Thank you.
BC, BCIU. They had a Christmas.
Yes.
No, it's paid for. I just kept the. I'm sorry, other than that, Mr. Strong, I'm pleased.
A couple of things. The winter sports are up and going, and the girls' basketball team is undefeated. Oh, yeah, that's, that's great for the program. Boys are three and one. Wrestling won their first meeting. I think they won their first tournament as well. The football program, just to let you know, they won the sportsmanship award. I believe it was the third or fourth and second of the year, which, as I've said in the past, I think is just a tremendous honor. And then the last thing, there is a new restaurant opening up, Mo's in Exeter Commons. On Thursday the nineteenth, I think you're gonna get a Connect Jet, not even. Yeah, it was in the paper today. I'm gonna read the email. You can eat Exeter's newest restaurant to help raise money for the athletic department. Mo's is having a brand opening in Exeter Commons. They're doing a pay what you want day. Hundred percent of the proceeds will be donated to the Exeter Athletic Department. Swing by Mo's anytime on Thursday for a one-of-a-kind burrito.
With your corners.
Taco or burrito bowl. But seriously, that's, that's a tremendous thing for a new business to do. You saw it tonight, the EMA helped out with the, the John Gator, or Gator. But this is, they reached out to us, so hopefully we can support them. A big thank you from, for me, and I'm sure the whole board knows. We will now.
I know, but I've never been to it. I've seen it.
If the hours weren't listed, my guess is they would be able to rush down through the, it's down at the end. Somebody told me there's a liquor store down that way. I don't know.
And the new LA nail.
It's in the Boskers, Boskers.
Exeter Commons, it's down by Staples.
State store.
I just heard of a liquor store.
Five below.
Five below, yeah.
I stay at that.
Yeah, keep going to the right. Yeah.
Down by the witness store.
Yeah.
We hear you, too.
Will the presence of Mo's impact the assessment of that product?
Uh, it was already there. But it's now full.
Okay. Mr. Brady, have anything from the township?
Did we get through BCTC and public relations? No.
Oh, yeah. We're a district group.
Right now, no, right now.
Out the furnace, Brady.
At this point, we hope no liaison discuss.
I've been liaising with them. I would think they're supposed to go a meeting tonight on the Strategic Planning Steering Committee. They're going to reschedule it because the contractor who's going, who's going to run it couldn't get, get here.
If he had next year?
They had no, they had snow. But they are, we are being included in their planning, which I think is significant. That never happened before.
Well, they're also planning a public meeting sometime in January on Saturday.
Saturday in January, Thursday, Thursday, fourth.
Encourage everybody to try to attend that because there's a strategic plan for the entire township.
Public relations, Mr. Feesinger?
One quick good news item. Back in August, Homin Chodri, the owner of Dairy Queen, made us aware of a grant that was available through Dairy Queen and Orange Julius. And we shared up with teachers and a number of teachers took advantage of that, put you on the spot, and submitted things. Mark Ricketts is one of the teachers. Also Donna Barnhart and Susan Amorino submitted things. And all three of them, it was a national contest, and all three of them were selected to receive gift cards. And Mark, I'm gonna let you tell them what you had to do and what the three of you got. You know that better than I do.
Um, we had to write a hundred and forty-seven, a hundred and forty-nine word essay about and kind of compare getting equipment to like our favorite Dairy Queen treat. I made like mine, unlike my program was the Blizzard, and the extra supplies were the toppings that were mixed in and made it better. And we got, two of us got a hundred and forty-nine dollar gift cards to Office Max. And Donna Barnhart, who's in mind building, got, I think it was fourteen hundred. She was one of the grand prize winners. Fourteen hundred and ninety. So it was just kind of neat that three of us from Exeter won this in a national competition. I joked, because the first ten got the grand prize. I told Donna I was eleventh, and she. But it was, it was a great thing that Homin did because it kind of reminded us there's, there's money out there, and, and now we, we can use that for extra supplies, so we don't have to ask the district for it.
Thank you, Mark.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Feesinger? BCTC, excuse me?
Oh, just, you know, it's still there. Actually, the, the CDL program has really taken off. They've got the next class bill. If you have nothing familiar with that, BCTC acquired property, constructed a, constructed a CDL course, and.
Is that the one on one eighty-three?
Yes. Yeah, as a matter of fact. We went through all the zoning, term rail, and all that stuff, but we, we didn't really get through that. But it's, I think it's gonna be very successful. It is the only CDL program working right. And right now, the classes are running probably anywhere between twenty and thirty. And we've got a new director and a, and an instructor on board. It's going very well.
I'm sorry.
Remind, two new tractor truck.
Mr. Brady, facilities.
First, I'd like to go through our motions of our report for the committee. First item is, we'd like to move that the Board of School Directors approve a change order, PC one zero three, for the Owattan Creek Plumbing Contract with Diane Cooper Incorporated, the amount of thirteen thousand, one hundred fifty-nine dollars and ninety cents. The change order represents resolution of all outstanding plumbing claims and cost proposals as represented in attachment sixteen dot A.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion. Hearing now in all favor of the change order, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Second item, which relates to our discussions we had the other evening, is tied into our turf field. I move that Board of School Directors authorize the district administration to enter into a contract with field turf prior to March two thousand fourteen for replacement of the senior high school turf field at a cost of five hundred twenty-one thousand, nine hundred eighty dollars and fifty-one cents. The funding for the capital project will be included with the fiscal year two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen budget appropriation. Field turf participates in the Keystone Purchasing Network Contract number two zero one, two zero three dash zero one. The product has been bid to national level. Therefore, individual schools do not have to duplicate the formal bid process. This is indicated in attachment sixteen dot B.
Motion is second. Discussion.
I just have a couple of questions. Do, do we keep maintenance records on fixes on the field?
Yes. In fact, in this past year, there were over a hundred areas that were torn on the field, where some were drawn to the attention of Mr. Lagaw, choir, who have been at the football games this season. So it is reaching its life expectancy. They expect the field to last anywhere from eight to twelve years. Pars is at ten years. So through photo degradation and things like that, it breaks down. The use of the field is high, if you were to look at it. I mean, I'm sure there's children have seen it and out there early in the morning or late in the afternoon, the evening, if they're playing sports. The new field that we're looking at is, you know, ten years later in technology, so it's going to be, you know, supposed to hold up as well, if not better. But the main thing is it's going to provide a safe playing surface for children. That's our goal.
Do we, do we know what the maintenance cost would have been this year if we did not replace the field?
Do we have a number of that?
I do not have that.
It's not really a maintenance thing. Once it starts breaking down, it starts going, I think, whatever it is.
The, I asked this question before, but I was wondering, you know, there's a lot of use of the field by activities outside of the school district. And I was wondering, you know, what we charge for the use of the field, and have we sort of done an assessment of that to look at, you know, if we can sort of settle an account aside, escrow the money that will go back into the field in the future for repairs or something like that? Do you want to handle that?
Yeah, we, we actually, and one of the things that we have been able to do is we've generated some additional income. We have taken a look at, there's different levels of what is charged for district facilities, whether it be the gym or the field or what have you.
It can be as low as a hundred dollars in some cases, but for a bigger event, I
I know there are a number, a lot of districts, or PIWA looks, has used Exeter's turf field for several years for playoffs, et cetera. And I think there is an opportunity there to really look at what, you know, fees we would be charging. And even there are some outside soccer organizations, but I think there's opportunity to get more. I think Tom does a very good job of not only covering costs, but adding some profit.
We, this logic, we have reviewed the numbers last year. There were changes made, give comps and flexibility to do more of a last minute type. You can, the field's available from a scheduling perspective. He had a master's schedule, so he's able to do that. But we would, again, we would be looking at that again this year, certainly.
I just see a last question. It had, was more had to do with sort of booster clubs. Do they, where does the money for the booster clubs go? Does it stay within the particular program that the money is raised for? And do, like, for instance, I, I volunteer at the, for the Music Association. I'm wondering if we pay a fee to draw income or revenue from the sporting event that's sponsored by the school district. Because that, you know, basically, we're creating an environment that is allowing an organization to profit from and then use that money at their own discretion. And I'm just wondering if there's, I mean, you guys probably reviewed this before at other board, board meetings, but.
I think that as we saw earlier tonight, when we looked at the Gator, the money that comes in to those organizations typically gets put right back into the organization, whether it's for equipment, or a few years ago, it was for the choir. They purchased the stands for the performers there. I know that we've purchased, they purchased tubas, they purchased bass fiddles. They, so I know on the music side, because I was very involved in that one. That gets, and safety with.
They purchased equipments, equipment for sports, whether, I think there was a, like the free, free throw shooting return, where the kids can go and the kits back to them where the boosters paid for. So typically, what's happening with the boosters, like you have written enough checks, I know, that the money then is, goes back into the kids to help them other field trips. Because we don't pay, we're not paying for any of the trips, so a lot of times the money's going towards that as well.
And the student activity fee, is that, is that, where does that go?
That really is in the general fund as revenue, really to offset the cost of coaching fees, supplies and fees, wages.
To touch on your maintenance question, Mike, we did also the other night talk about the track and its requirements for maintenance. And we looked at that, and we said, you know, should we be, they looked and said, we could do two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars worth of removing and repairing and upgrading this, or we could do eight or nine thousand dollars worth of work on it a year, which we solidly agree that eight to nine thousand dollars for a track is a lot better than two hundred and twenty-five thousand. But it's not the same case as the field, where the usage and things of that nature come into play. So we did look judiciously at where the money should not go and where it should be, sort of those cases. Thank you.
How, how long was the turf? When was it?
Ten years.
Ten years. So then that basically like fifty thousand dollars a year, right? If we take a little over ten years, because now it's gonna be five hundred thousand to replace it.
Well, that's the future, that's the future cost. The initial cost was more, this turf, this turf actually came in cheaper.
Yeah. We originally knew this was going to be seven hundred fifty to eight hundred plus thousand, so we're actually doing much. doing much better.
I just wanted to add something. So how many games do Exeter teams play on that turf in years?
Soccer, ball, field hockey.
I would say 100.
Yeah. So you have 100?
You think you're soccer with girls.
And the band.
Have the band practices and practices.
Field hockey.
And then for the practices.
Football, that's like, yeah, practices, the band.
Bizzet.
Yeah, the kids are on the turf, so it's, 100 how many? A lot, right?
Total uses would probably be over 500 if you include all the gym classes.
Yeah.
It's used on a weekly basis without the county.
Well, since it is such a, since probably all the children that, you know, that use it are, you know, throughout the whole community, maybe we can get, you know, the community thinking about helping us in some kind of fundraiser, whether it's through the foundation or something, the Exeter Foundation, to help us as that, as being one of those projects for the next time around, because I think it is an expensive, you know, expensive, expensive item every 10 years. And, you know, maybe we should think about that, because I, I remember I was over in Wilson and their foundation, they're upgrading their, they upgraded their stadium and their foundation gave them a half a million dollars, I know. So, you know, and even too, maybe Exeter Commons, they do not pay the full amount of taxes, they got, they got sometimes, you know, taxes and they think they're not...
That's not true.
That's what they're trying to do.
Exeter Commons pays the full amount of taxes.
Oh, that's good.
And we give a portion of it to pay off the thing. Exeter Commons pays the full taxes.
Oh, okay, so we give them to pay for the road improvements.
We pay the people, the state that financed it. The county pays all of their taxes from there and the township pays all theirs, we pay 40%, 35%.
All right, well, I mean, I think, I think it's a community thing going on and maybe we can, you know, help, have the community help us with some of our Exeter activities that are very, very important to the students and to the wellbeing, you know, of the Exeter school district.
I guess what I'm missing here is why you think the community is using the field and not the school, because frankly, when we're talking about soccer, field hockey, the ball...
No, I mean, these children live in the community, that's my statement.
Yeah, but they're paying the taxes for the school district and that's all part of us. And they're also paying their activity fee and...
Well, that's, that's true, but I mean, I'm just thinking that maybe we can raise additional funds that we don't have to come to the taxpayers for taxes, and there are generous people in the community that might do that for us.
I am going to call a question. We are voting on contracting to replace the field, the turf on the field. In favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion does carry.
Other things that were handled during our meeting, we will have our next meeting in February of 2014. We had a very indepth discussion regarding safety in our schools, particularly about the cameras and where they're located, how many cameras we have in various buildings for safety as far as corridors and the number that we have right now on our buses, and we discussed the fact that we need to do some upgrades and more installation of cameras for our own safety of our student population. The next thing we discussed was the various maintenance needs for the buildings. For instance, at Jackson Wall, there's one carpet left in there in the hallway that we will be removing and replacing because it's come worn out. On top of that, it has tripping hazard and other things going, so that will be replaced with files upcoming here. And the major item of discussion for the evening was the bus facility and the fact that we need to be, that we're gonna be moving forward with having interviews of design firms to look at how that facility could be laid out for us on the Awatting Creek side.
You can just, uh, security cameras, things I obviously in the hospital. How, how will we manage, what will be sort of the management of the camera system?
I think that's a better question for Dr. Martin or...
We may buy management.
Is there a sort of a command center where we are monitoring those cameras on a, whatever the time period when people are in the building?
Yes, well, at the high school, we have a security person there, I don't know what the position is called, it's not school resource officer.
School safety assistant.
School safety assistant, who, whose job it is, part of his job is to monitor what's, you know, cameras and so forth. But one of the things that we have done, and I'm not sure if this is related to your question or not, but it's germane to what Jim had said about what was discussed the other night, is the placement of cameras initially when we purchased them and how many are needed in each school and where they should be placed for security purposes. And we did talk to the police chief about helping us with that and doing walkthroughs in our buildings and telling us how many cameras that we would need for each school, and that includes all of our buildings and where those cameras should be placed to monitor best for intruders, et cetera, et cetera. But the, the Exeter police also through our computer system have access to all of our cameras, so they can monitor in the event that we feel that there's someone wandering the building or something like that and we don't know where they are, that the police can also have access to, you know, from their vehicles where they have computers, they're able to view our cameras. So I don't think we've done that at any other school besides the high school, but we, I know we talked about doing it at the junior high in the future. I don't think that we have done it outside of the high school, but certainly that's a good place to start.
I, I don't wanna ask too many questions, because I don't think the whole world needs to know how we run security either.
Yeah, yeah, but I, but I mean, I think it's good to know that the police are also able to view our cameras.
So are we in a position to look for some landman to...
We've done that already, Mr. Kramer has applied to grant money that would help with that and see if we're able to get some of that.
But it'll be in the grants, cameras for six buses.
Yeah, those are for the buses.
Any other questions for facilities? All the committee, their report, name and request, Ms. Peters.
I, I move that we pay the bills for this month, last month, the general pond was $218,122.90 and from the Awatting Creek Fund, it was $1,080 and that's in attachment 17-2, the money that we gave out.
And the second.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Quinter. I shared with you some good news last month regarding the high school and their advanced placement scores. They have achieved the distinction of being on the honor roll for the college boards because of our participation rate increasing in terms of how many students are taking how many advanced placement exams and also the success rate of our students, which is close to 90% success rate. So it's really a distinction that we're very proud of. Another positive thing in terms of high school and performance, student performance, we are third in the county for our school performance profile scores at the high school, achieving a, an aggregate score of 90.1, which is really excellent and behind Wilson and just barely right behind Boyertown is the second one. And just something to note, some statistics I got recently from the BCIU, the aggregate of all the operating Pennsylvania cyber schools, their aggregate score for the school performance profile is 47.5. And if you just look at that compared to, to, regardless of what school, compared to our scores, students just are not being successful, a few of them are being successful in the cyber environment as compared with, in their classrooms with their teachers, which is where most things belong. So just something of note that I wanted to share with you.
My command. I've handed out a proposed list of committees and liaisons. Is there any corrections to be made on that?
Yeah, actually, I think Mrs. Quinter and I should be co-chairs on that. I have visions of these committee meetings where she says, man, count off, when I say one, she says, good, we're all here. I'm just kidding.
Any other thoughts?
It is a committee of two guys, you know what I mean, and we have a chairman. Yeah.
So I, there's no revision suggested, I would, I believe we have to accept this by vote. I'll entertain a motion to accept the committee's assignments.
Second.
Motion is second. Now we get to really discuss it. Hearing no discussion, all in favor of accepting the list of board assignments, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And we have a need to get together for one of our board retreats in January. Normally this is a Saturday morning where we are not bound by a specific agenda and we can discuss the direction we wanna go. It is hosted by the superintendent and it's not an official meeting, so there's a chance for us to exchange ideas. If anyone has any Saturdays they know they're not available in January, appreciate you always knowing, we'll go from there.
Let's see, the Saturday is in January. January 4th is the first Saturday.
Yeah, I'm not gonna be there all weekend.
Okay, cross out January 4th, I'll be on the 11th.
The 11th.
We usually meet in the morning, from about 8:30 maybe till about 10:30, depending on how much there is. I know. That's the target.
So we're going to tentatively schedule our board retreat for Saturday, January the 11th at 8:30 here in this room. Must be changing to another one.
What does everybody want for breakfast?
We normally have done some coffee and...
Yeah, but if I make the coffee, I can't, no guarantees of anything.
I'll supply the coffee since I'm...
You don't trust me.
Tim and I'll take care of her.
Are there any other issues coming for the board?
Yes, I'd like to...
Yeah, there is an egg menu too. It's almost over.
I was on the Department of Environmental Science, Department of Environmental...
Protection.
DEA Department, Department of Environmental, I guess, something like that. And they, they are offering to schools grants for environmental projects, so I, I thought I just, and I think they have this like full like January 10th or something that they have, it has to be in. So I was thinking if there's anyone, you know, any teacher in the district that is interested in environmental education or something that they could do for their projects and to get a grant, I don't know how much it is, but you can, you can look it up on their website.
Solar powered camp.
No, she's just waiting for it.
Actually, we were talking about those for the...
Was there a project in Awatting Creek that was going on with the pond and the environmental project?
Yes, yes, there was.
Or is going to be continuing or needs financing?
It's not the national renewable energy, it's not that expensive, because they have grants too.
This was on the, I'm getting a new vault, and so I was looking on it for everything. And then I saw that it said that they were giving grants to schools for environmental projects, so you might just check it out. It's, I think the deadline is in the, like, January 10th or something like that. I mean, I know it's closed, but the...
And, and once it called again, we have the...
The Department of Environmental...
Protection.
Protection.
Protection is the DEP is always called.
The DEP.
Okay, I didn't know it sounded like that, but, but I also, yesterday, I read an article from USA Today, and, and you know the big push that we have in educate, in public education, that the schools are failing? Well, this says, "A poverty, not education, is the crisis in US." And, and they, and they go on to say that the schools with the least amount of, it's not, it has nothing to do with race, ethnicity, anything, it has to do with the, the amount of money people have that can support their children in, in educational...
Isn't that that Diane Gramwich article?
No, this comes, I, I saw that one, but this is from USA Today that they have it. And, and in that they say that the greatest thing that education, all tools can do is to provide preschool education for all their students, because that will give the leg up on these children as they go into, into kindergarten. So I wanted to maybe let you see it, Dr. Martin, but it was, it is an eye opener, you know, all these people that are bringing schools, the teachers, that they're not the problem, the problem is poverty, and that they can show it in every research that you have kids, not that kids in poverty are not intelligent, is that they don't have the resources to provide stimulation early on in their life, you know, they don't have their parents to send them to, you know, to the zoo or to the library or to, to see, you know, to see what Disney World looks like, or go on vacations and all those things. So it was, it's an eye opening thing, and I hope more people realize that the crisis is not in education, the crisis is because of poverty.
Thank you, Ms. Peters. We are about to embark on our budget for the 14, 15 years school year. To introduce us all for that, Mrs. Skydish is going to make our presentation.
This is the first look at the preliminary budget. We will be adopting the preliminary budget February 18th. Going through this process, we will be able to, if we adopt a budget that shows need to increase taxes above the index, we can apply for exceptions. A lot is gonna change between now and June, but preliminary budget will provide us with flexibility as we go through the budget processes in the next several months. This is a general overview, I'll be providing more detail, more descriptive information to board members in January, but this is a first look. There are some bright spots in the economy, unemployment is down over the past year, improvement in the housing market, see that in the transfer tax revenue, building permits are up, it's just 33, it's 55% higher than the prior year. Mirror red, both Southwest girl, I mean, that brings in more this privilege tax and other taxes. We're seeing improved consumer spending as household valuations improve. Our number of properties that have a five for reduction assessed value is reduced. 2012, 185, down to 71, so that's significant. We hope for that, the common level ratio has a lot to do with that, but that helps our total assessed value. And our collection rate continues to be strong, I'm using a 97.7, 97% collection rate, tax revenue. This just shows the trend in our assessed value for 14, 15. Based upon the information I've received from the county... Based upon the information I've received from the county and assumptions that I'm making for January and April interims, it's actually showing a slight increase for 1415 in our total assessed value, which, which is, you know, is good news, it's small, uh, in terms of the percent, but it's a positive thing, which means that all, all of our large, um, commercial taxpayers, they've appealed. And those things have been settled, the most recent being Walmart. And with the residential appeals, uh, really trending down, and, uh, we're, I think, in a position where we may, if our interims continue to be strong in the housing market, uh, we may see continued for an upward trend. So I'm assuming that for this first look. Transfer tax, you can see the first several months, the line in blue were ahead of the two-year average, and that's statewide as well. So, uh, all these bright spots, uh, really brings our projection for this year's revenue. Local sources specifically, top line, uh, about 370,000, better than the adopted budget. General fund expenditures for this year. I'm estimating the, uh, change from the original budget, a decrease of 730,000. Again, some things may change as the year goes on. Employee wages, uh, seven, excuse me, 290,000 lower is due to contract settlement. And some support, resignations, terminations where replacement, uh, cost was less. Level of column movement wasn't as high as I had budgeted. Column movement meaning teachers, uh, print the contract as they take courses, complete them, they can move columns. Benefits, less than budgeted due to the contract settlement. Trend in tuition reimbursement. And just, let me just, uh, indicate to you what was provided, the PowerPoint with our attachments of revenue, uh, by local, state, and federal source, and objects of expenditures, uh, in summary level and in detail. So you would be able to look at these attachments to see the different trends. I provide, uh, five years of actuals, and then the estimate, uh, as well as the preliminary budget. So, uh, tuition reimbursement is down, self-insured dental, I'm at this point projecting that. IU services, uh, education, the Exeter Virtual Academy, 21 students there. Because I did not originally budget in that line item, uh, I'm separating it out, estimating a cost of 90,000. Charter school tuition will be down.
So that's basically money we're paying ourselves versus going outside the district?
No, we have to pay to the provider, because we're not doing, teaching our own courses.
But that's a...
But that's a much lower rate than what we would be paying out, yeah.
Charter school tuition, originally budgeted, we'll go to this next slide, that we would have 131 students, 1.5 million in tuition costs, but right now, we're at about 110, 114. So, uh, we're looking at 242,000 less in tuition. And we're almost halfway through the year. Start legally, don't see that many coming on in the second half of the year. But we'll have to continue to monitor that as we monitor, uh, revenue and expense as this process goes on. So going back to this, that's 730,000, major categories of change, wages, benefits, and the tuition, charter school tuition. So, bottom line, uh, what we're looking at right now for this year, rather than a 1.8 million dollar deficit, it's about 800,000. But again, I caution everyone and myself that, you know, we have to continue to look at things like special placements. We haven't been through the winter yet, what's going to happen with our energy costs, et cetera.
Fortunately, that's not...
The preliminary budget for 1415, uh, second column, uh, shows revenue of 66 million. This is before any tax increase, and expenditures of 69 million, or a deficit of 3.4 million. The local sources of revenue, which, well, we're seeing some bright spots, real estate tax, uh, due to assessed value, earned income tax, transfer tax, business privilege tax. They're expected to, uh, in line for preliminary injection, increase by 225,000. The liquid tax will go down. This year, we have a one-time large collection. So that will go back to its normal level of about 1.2 million dollars per year. The state reimbursement, this is the largest increase. The state source is increasing by a million, it relates to the reimbursement of retired contributions. The rate for the employer contribution goes from 16.93% to 21.40. 55, that's not correct, it's 21.4, uh, where that's related to 744,000. We receive reimbursement on debt service payments, uh, from, from the state. And the 1994 issue has a, uh, high product reimbursement rate. And the way this, the debt schedule, uh, in 1415, we are paying a lot on that issue. It's 40% reimbursement, so for next year, we'll be getting 228,000 more in that line item. So all those things considered, uh, increase of 1.2%, or 782,000. The other sources of revenue is decreasing 273,000. That really is just, um, financing that we use for, uh, the Acer, uh, computer purchases. And as things go on with our technology that we may be purchasing in 1415, we will look at financing sources, so that number may change in 1415 as well. Looking at expenditures, uh, 3.4 million increase in expenditures from this year to next year. Uh, you can see I have quite a major object, employee wages, uh, about 2%. That includes some new staffing requests. Employee benefits is the big ticket item, uh, really due to retirement and, and, uh, the healthcare premium increase of 8%. And I'll, next slide, we'll get into some more of these. So those are the major, uh, items, and we have some budget impact items, things that are new to the budget, uh, going forward. So the healthcare increase of 8%, 450,000. The retirement rate increase, that's 1.4 billion. Uh, IU services, we've increased placements in Powell and transitions. These are life skill students, 139,000. And I just received an email from, uh, Dr. Milic today that some of, uh, students' early intervention, we may have to add cost, you know, in some other categories. There's some real needy students, uh, coming up, and so that's the kind of thing we go through in this whole process of, uh, identifying, uh, things that will impact the budget. New math curriculum, curriculum, 290,000. Textbook replacements are proposed for English, foreign languages, food and consumer science, 125,000. The STEM program at the senior high, year one cost, 67,000. And there's a laptop one-to-one program, 180,000. And again, contract wage increase. So those major items account for the three, most of the 3.4 billion dollar increase. New staff request, autistic teacher for a classroom at Reithin. Students are aging out of the K-4 elementary. Will need three part-time aides to support that classroom. There's also a proposal for change of status for a part-time special ed secretary to full-time, because their technology, management, and their access-filling responsibilities have expanded greatly. And there's potential for additional access revenue if we're able to get more support in that office. Transportation, you know, adding two additional routes, in case there are additional special needs, non-public requests. This slide illustrates the impact of the retirement rates, uh, going forward. 1415 is 21.4. By 1718, we'll be up to 30% contribution rate. The net contribution is after the state, uh, reimburses. So looking at the time period, 1314 to 1718, uh, it's additional cost of 3.1 million. So that line, net to the district, we're looking at 700,000 more per year, you know, based upon assumptions on wages, et cetera. Right now, we have a commitment and fund balance of 1.8, almost 8 million. So it will be a challenge to try and ease into those three increases. The index for Exeter is 2.7. It's an adjusted index from the state because of our market value, personal income grade share. Applying that index to our current millage, uh, if you stay with the index, the, the maximum increase would be to a millage of 31.6265. The value of a mill, based upon my assumptions that our assessed value is improving a little bit, is 1.3 million. So that could generate, that additional mill of 0.831 could generate 1.1 million dollars. As far as the exceptions, uh, pension, my preliminary calculation, we haven't gotten the, uh, documents or spreadsheets from the state yet. They come out right at the end of the month. 557,000, which would amount to about 0.42 of a mill. This lets you increase your tax above the index, if you're approved for the exception. And that's what we'll apply for, uh, going through this preliminary process. Special education, we do not qualify based upon my, uh, calculation at this point, and I've not completed the school construction. I'll have, you know, those final things once I get, well, I have the state's tools to do it. So I'm using my own, and, uh, in January, I'll apply the final results. So at this point, assuming the pension exception, it will be about, you know, 4.06% increase in taxes or 1.25 million. The next slide summarizes, uh, the current year estimate and the preliminary budget, looking at the current tax rate of 30.795, what it would be increasing to the index of 2.7, and what would be including the pension exception. Commitments, uh, showing what our balance and commitments are. Assignments, and this is something that we really need to discuss at a, a future business function committee meeting. We, assignments include budgetary things, your deficit for the fall of this new year. We have included, and these are all up for discussion, increases in healthcare costs and costs related to the Affordable Care Act. The laptop, one-to-one. It's just not one year, obviously, you're starting with one class, then you're gonna have another class, and then you're gonna have to replace these if you keep doing it. So is that a legitimate assignment of fund balance for future fund balance liability? Several net assignments, uh, is it subtotal there, unassigned fund balance. The percentages at the bottom represent the unassigned fund balance as a percentage of total expenditures. That cannot, your final adopted budget, that cannot exceed 8%. So the way the numbers are looking right now, that final line column, could, you know, depending on what our assignments would be, that's above the 8%. So, uh, you know, you could not take the full pension exception, or, you know, we have a lot of work to do between now and we get to that point, so. Commitments, this is a summary of what has been committed and how we've been using the funds. Just to give you some examples of what commitments or assignments are. We used a number of these, uh, and they're all legitimate.
Do you see anything in the future, I'm talking a little bit all the way out, as far as health spending in Canada, we sort of push our staff out on the exchange, and they get a bucket of dollars and do their own thing? You know, if you look at sort of the exchange, there's, you know, the bronze, gold, silver, platinum playing, and, you know, people can basically have an à la carte approach to what sort of fits their needs. I know it's a little unsettled right now because of the way, you know, the, the website has rolled out for Obamacare, but, you know, is that, is that something that helps us get our arms around healthcare expenses?
I, we're part of the, the trust. But I know they, obviously, it's top priority to look at alternatives to control the cost.
And before you go on, on page 19, you have listed your financial security arrangements, unexpended. What was that?
That was for the Shellborne, uh, older term hike road improvements. When we, uh, started the Awatton project, the Watch Creek construction project, we were required, except we didn't have a pen on and a township, to contribute a certain amount towards those road improvements. Since then, uh, that has become a, you know, the state is fully funding the project, and that has been released, and we dropped it down into capital improvements. So, um, retirements, February 1st is the notification deadline. None of these numbers reflect any traditional savings, enrollment projections. We are taking, as we do every year, a hard look at class sizes. Yeah, because of what our, uh, enrollment has been going down, there are a number of positions that we have not filled in the past few years. Based upon the results of the 2014 issue, I'll be adjusting the debt service and reimbursement buffers. I mentioned some of these others before, checking my numbers. It's a big budget, there's a lot of pieces to it, lots to review. We'll evaluate staffing requests, et cetera. And then, any questions? That's, that's the first look. I'm encouraged by some bright spots in the economy. And February, the governor will give his proposal. I've got too much in basic debt increases, but, because they're dealing with the...
It's an election year. It's an election year. Yeah, it's an election year. I think this is going to be a very positive thing.
I understand that the state sometimes will help to incentivize folks to retire. Is it possible for Exeter Township as a school district to add an incentive?
We have done that.
We were doing that for the last two years.
We didn't do it last year.
We didn't do it last year.
Two years ago.
Two years, and we'd like to believe that it did encourage, uh, whenever it was at least 12. Now, we have to look at the number of retirees. There are five that could retire, normal retirement, and we have about a dozen that could be, uh, early retirement, kicking a little bit of penalty.
Are all those five done?
No, they're currently.
Oh.
Oh, I'm talking about, that was my...
Yeah.
Don, you're a carer.
I've lost my touch.
Don, you're a carer.
I called it.
Okay, thank you.
I did, I was like, whoa! And so did Don.
That'll be the first member of Pisa to qualify for 300% of his...
So that's something...
And I'd just like to thank you for the work you did on this. I'm not a real numbers guy, but I always understand this presentation. I know you put a lot of work in, so, thank you.
Are we going to do this the same way as last? Are we going to do this the same way as Wes?
Yeah, we, we had, I guess, more of an informal first couple months, and then March, April, and May, we have a breakdown at the beginning of the month as a business functions meeting, where we kind of delve into this more, more detailed, and then it leads into the, when we can get the vote on it, so we will do the same.
We need to have our vote in February for our application for all the exceptions, correct, just in case we need...
We will have the preliminary budget.
Yeah.
Any questions, folks? Like a short two-minute get-together, maybe five minutes, with the motion adjourned?
Some of.
You're adjourned.